Good evening and welcome to Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, August 27. If you're watching live on Monday, August 27, feel free to call in with comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch live on Optimum or Verizon Cable TV. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast at our streaming provider, PCTV, Pleasantville Community Television at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is off our regular schedule because of Labor Day. It is Wednesday, September 5, work session at 7, regular meeting at 8. So because Monday's Labor Day, next meeting is Wednesday, September 5.
And the Jewish holidays, really?
And the Jewish holidays, right. Is there any comment from the public to start? Anybody have anything to say on any subject? We'll invite you at any point. But absent anyone on that subject, we have two modest public hearings tonight. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on introductory law 5 of 2018 to create Chapter 166 Taxation, Article 10 of the Village Code concerning real property assessment of converted condominiums?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome to the public hearing. You want to give us the summary, Eric?
Sure, so this provides, I'll say, protection to the village. There has been a phenomenon in Westchester and some other communities across the state where there are properties that are taxed at a fee simple, a market rate, that would like to be converted to a condominium rate, which is linked to rental rates in the community. So this provides a layer of protection for the village. The school district passed a similar resolution protecting themselves, and you'll start seeing this playing out across Westchester and other municipalities.
So just to add on to that a little bit, fee simple ownership is the category that most single-family homes exist in, and that it's true in our community, as in most in New York State, that condominium ownership is advantaged by the New York State tax law, which is to say that a fee simple property and a condominium property of exactly the same market value pay markedly different property tax rates. The fee simple rate turning out to be quite a bit higher than the condo rate, despite the fact that the market value of the two residences are the same. So is there any comment or question?
I do. I don't read in this that this impacts new condominiums. So let's say somebody wanted to build a condominium here, that is not a converted condominium, correct?
Correct.
So this wouldn't restrict their taxability or in any way impact their taxability like that.
Nor do we have the right to do that.
I didn't know.
Right.
We apparently have the right to do this, so. And the other thing is, let's say there's a rental building, so one of our new buildings being built, it's a rental building, and in 2024, they decide, you know what, we want to convert this to condominium, but it's already being taxed as a rental building, not as a fee simple ownership. But this doesn't sound like, when I read it, it was going to impact that.
Well, a rental building is already taxed-
That's what I'm saying.
-as a commercial rental.
Right, right. So this wouldn't impact that scenario. This impacts the fee simple ownership that's being taxed as a fee simple now, so for example, townhouses.
Right.
Right? And then they say, hey, I got a great idea, let's convert this instead of to a homeowner, townhouses with a homeowners association, let's convert to a condominium, and we'll all save on taxes.
Exactly.
That's what this-
And that's what's been happening in other places.
Which essentially, just to read from the actual text, "A dwelling unit held in condominium form of ownership that has previously been on assessment role as a dwelling unit in other than condominium form of ownership and has not been subject to the provisions." So that's a converted condominium, in other words.
Got it.
So I think it's all pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Eric, other municipalities have passed similar language?
Yes. Basically all working off the same language.
Councils reviewed it, no?
Right. So it has no effect on an existing condominium. It only affects a property that was not previously in a condominium form of ownership and would propose to change.
Correct.
All right, any further comments? Any comments from the public on this subject of this law? All right.
Say the call-in number?
769-1677.
This we just tested it.
Yes. All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have closed the public hearing on that subject, and there is a resolution later in our agenda to take action on this matter. Second public hearing, is there a motion to open a public hearing on introductory law 6 of 2018 to amend Chapter 148 Signs and Outdoor Display Structures, Section 12, titled "Approving Authority Concerning Applications for Signs and Outdoor Display Structures"?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Welcome to the public hearing. Eric, you want to give the summary on this?
Sure, so this dates back a year or so ago. Patty and Robert had been working on this with our village attorney. Basically, there was a limited path for typically people in our business district or commercial owners who would want a sign that was bigger than the code allowed.
Or not necessarily bigger, but just different.
Different.
Right, not within the spec of the code.
Correct. So those who wanted to seek a variance, this gives them a formal path forward. Robert and Patty talked to the other boards to see where the best home for this was going to be.
Where they would grieve it, essentially.
Correct, yep. And the Architectural Review Board, it's an aesthetic issue, so it seemed the most logical. Other municipalities have it flow through the Architectural Review Board as well. So this has been a long time in the making, and now we're formal.
Where were they going before this, to the planning?
Well, they've been going to the ARB, and in some cases, ARB has taken, I think, thoroughly responsible steps to approve things that were logical, reasonable, and appropriate. But they, in a few cases, were operating in the gray area because there was no clarity about-
There's no statutory authority to have them here.
So this eliminates the gray area and formally gives them that right. And the other piece of it, as a long ago member of the ARB, it also means that folks who are applying can potentially present their project and present the case for exceeding or changing what the code allows and get approval on what are frequently de minimis matters, same night, no need to go through multiple steps. So certainly something I support. Any further comment, questions, comment from the public? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. All right. Our next visit is from Sustainable Westchester. Welcome, Sustainable Westchester. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Virginia Steinberg from Sustainable Westchester, and thank you very much. I know how difficult summer meetings and getting into agendas, how challenging that is, so I appreciate you taking the time to allow me to go through this. I've tried to keep it short and sweet. We're at the contract renewal period, and the pages you have in front of you outline the procedure and the process of getting to the next contract phase. The contract is set to start on January 1st of 2019. And the reason for my being here tonight is that we are in the process of having the memorandum of understandings signed by the end of the month, which is a rather ambitious timeframe. The reason is because we're going out to bid. We want to allow three weeks to bid, and we're going to be approaching potential suppliers for our program, the electricity program, starting the week after Labor Day, giving three weeks. And then from that point, then, we should have a bid that meets our satisfaction and the standards that all of the municipalities have agreed to in terms of the benchmarks and the guidelines. And then we would go into the contract, the signing phase, starting the end of September and early October, and then notifying customers. It all is a rather fairly well-oiled machine, but it has definitive deadlines. On the third page, I've given a summary of what the program has done so far in terms of impact, both in terms of, not just both, but in several categories. The first is the dollar amount that we've saved for the individual households and small businesses who are part of the program. And you'll see that that's almost $12 million. And then we've served 1.2 billion kilowatt-hours, and very importantly, we've avoided 288,678 tons of carbon dioxide.
And that's driven by communities that chose to default green?
Correct.
Or customers who opted up.
Who opted up, if in the communities where the default was the basic supply, the fossil fuel mix.
Right.
And you raised my next point, which was that the goal of our program, when we set out to it, after all, we're, it's Westchester Power, but we are part of a program of Sustainable Westchester. And this program was very missionally driven to adhere to that focus of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and then additionally, to offer financial savings to consumers. Modest, or as much as they may be, we had, you know, people much smarter than myself looked at trends in the industry and said, if you have a sustained, long-term contract of at least two years, the odds are pretty high that you will save individuals and businesses money. And in fact, we have. In Pleasantville, you'll see that, oh, and very importantly as well, the other rationale for the program is that the two biggest footprints that we leave as human beings in terms of damage to the environment and carbon dioxide are our households and our cars. So that also is why these are the two probably most aggressive and promoted programs that we are trying to move forward. In Pleasantville, you'll see the numbers there, $360,000 have been saved, 29 million kilowatt-hours, and we've avoided 34 tons of carbon dioxide. To your point, these are by the folks on the chart on the right who opted up for green either in the residential or in their businesses.
Which is a pretty small number.
Correct, and that is one of the reasons why I'm going to make the plea that as you move forward, and I'll get into some of the numbers as well, consider, if you would, the green rate, because people by their very nature, I don't know about you, but I know myself, it takes effort to pick up the phone and call in and opt up, as easy as it is. That's all you have to do, and you get me or my colleagues.
Yeah, I mean, you can do it on the web, too.
Correct.
Right, but it still requires an act. Can I ask a question before I go further?
Of course.
When you see total savings in Pleasantville of $361,000, that is, again, as compared to what folks would have paid if they had stayed with Con Ed?
Correct.
And that's based not on any average, but on the actual, real fluctuating Con Ed rate?
They, again, yes, because they calculated it for each month, yes.
And are these savings per account, these dollar months, are they over the life of the contract or for years?
Correct, yes, they are. They're over the, in this case, yes, because it's the 25 months since the, from June 1 of 2016, or rather, yes, because we did the calculation that way. So it ends up being a 25-month calculation.
Thank you.
So let me say one other thing, and you, before you go further, and that is, just for folks who are watching and aren't looking at these charts, the savings per account over the 25 months of this program have been $183 per standard residential. And had an individual opted up for the green residential, the savings would have been $123, and that is as compared to the Con Ed brown supply.
Correct.
So just to make that point, and to engage that, obviously, when we get to the question of whether to go default green, folks who opted up to an all-green energy source, building a demand for more solar, more wind, more whatever, still would have saved $123 over 25 months, as compared to having done nothing if we hadn't joined the program.
Correct.
So that would fall into the category of you can have your cake and eat it, too.
Exactly.
Okay.
We're actually very proud of the fact that both actually ended up saving, and the commercial side, which was not a small feat.
Right.
So the narrative that you can be green if you want, but it will cost you money, in this case, it still saves you money against-
It still saves you money, and the difference between the rates is a fraction of a penny. It's .03 cents. So it ends up being about a dollar, maybe two more per month that you would save-
And then you have all the ecological benefits.
If you were the green versus the default, the default basic, and still you would have been saving against the Con Ed rates, correct?
Correct, thank you.
One of the things that I noticed when I was looking around a little bit about Pleasantville, you have a lot of initiatives that are sustainably oriented. You've got an entire committee that is about recycling, which is wonderful, because that's one of our pet things, is the whole zero, we have a zero-waste program. But also, as you move forward in terms of the NYSERDA grants that you might be able to consider as a municipality, as a clean energy community, there are options and opportunities for you to look at that. And one of the high-impact actions that a municipality can take is by joining CCA and going for the 100% renewable option. So again, something to consider as you move forward. The next page, we decided to do an exercise, understanding please, this is hypothetical, and it's based on various calculations that we've used for other municipalities as well that had the basic default rate, the fossil fuel rate. If Pleasantville had chosen the green supply, you'll notice, as we said, that in both supply options, the program saved money. The differential, you'll notice, on the chart on the right, ends up being about, you know, in this case, it ends up, the calculations that we have, it ends up being $1.68 more per month that the consumer would have spent. My guess is that realistically, that's closer to $2 to $2.50 that they would have paid per month.
As compared to the brown supply through CCA?
Correct, correct.
But still substantially less, or a bit less than the Con Ed brown?
And you have the benefit of the stable rates-
Right.
-because you don't go up and down. Your usage, of course, you know, like in a month like we've had, that most people, we're getting calls from people about how their bills are higher, and I ask them, well, is your air conditioner on? So that we can't change. And of course, we can't impact the delivery cost, which is entirely dictated by Con Ed. So if you look here at the amount that would have been saved, you'll see that the impact, and again, I'm looking at the carbon dioxide avoided, the emissions that have been avoided, you'll see the difference between what actually happened in Pleasantville with the 43 tons, million tons, and then you see that it's, that the number above has a few more digits to it. So for a fraction of a penny and a couple of dollars more a month, the impact is significantly greater. It's equivalent of kind of taking a car off the road for family, which starts to make a difference. So when you look at that, at the 8,800 tons of carbon dioxide that would have been avoided, you see below the equivalent of the cars, and this is kind of a standard calculation that is used in the industry to calculate impact of going green. The next, I would say probably the next chart that is, you know, kind of cutting to the chase, if you will, when we look at the rates or the benchmarks that we are considering, there has been a discussion with the Public Service Commission, and they are trying to get New York State, New York State sustain New York State. So it's an emphasis on developing the green energy market, if you will, in New York State. So right now, our program, the green supply is based on what we call Green E-Rex. And these come, can be from Oklahoma, Texas, and so forth, places that have very dirty air, so we're displacing that. But New York State wants to focus on cleaning up New York State's air. So we have been mandated in our program at this point to reevaluate the REX that we are going to be using. And we are looking at low-impact hydro. And you'll see that the REX and the indicative pricing, the way we're looking at it, and I really would almost say skipping to the last slide, the benchmark that we're asking for the municipalities to consider as part of the signature on the MOU is the residential rate would have to be at or below the 7.865, which you'll notice is not that dramatically different from where we are now. And then the commercial rate is going to actually lower, and that, the benchmark for that would be 8.785. And we're confident, based on trends right now, and a little bit of, I suppose you could say, finger crossing at the same time, that this is what we're going to be able to achieve going forward.
So both of those prices are below the Con Ed 12-month trailing average for a mixed supply?
For residential and then commercial, we're basing on the 24 months, because that's more realistic, frankly, in terms of where the market has been going.
And market is trending gently upward?
The market for the residential seems to be stable, trending upwards slightly. The commercial's actually come down, but we believe that the 8.55 could be a tad artificial based on some other factors. So we're looking at more realistically around the nine cents per kilowatt-hour.
And in the first program two years ago, was it 17 communities were in?
Oh, that's a good question.
Something like that. I guess, I don't even need that other than to say it was something in that order.
Correct.
Are new communities signing on for this next round?
Yes, yes, they are. We actually had, we had one in Nijsig territory that came on just quite recently. Their contract is up in the end of next April, 2019. And two are actually in the queue because they wanted to get in, but we said candidly, for consumer purposes, it doesn't make sense to send, so it can be very confusing, because we are mandated to send out letters notifying this and that. So we said, if you fold your consumers in now, your residents and the businesses, they're going to get a letter now, and they're going to get another letter in a month and a half to two months.
Right.
And frankly, we could end up losing customers, because they say, what's going on here? So we suggested to their town boards and their environmental folks, let's just wait a couple of months, because we will have a much better idea, and we can go and lump everybody into the program. So yes, we're up to 21, and I, we have two more in the queue, so we're doing-
And all of that means you're bringing to the market more demand and more leverage, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're hoping to bring more jobs, more locally, you know, we already have through Community Solar and Solarize, we've done some of that, which, by the way, can be folded into the Westchester Power program, so you can get the benefit of both of those. I do personally, so I'm-
So we have the memorandum of understanding on for resolution tonight. At what point do we have to make the decision about default brown or green?
You can do that at a later date, when you sign the contract. We've had a couple of municipalities that I've spoken to who have said so now, which in some ways makes it easier, because then when we're going out for the bidding process, we can indicate-
Right.
-the source that we're looking to, you know.
But that's not folded into the MOU?
No, it is not.
So if we decided this in the next two weeks, that would be sufficient?
That'd be wonderful, yes, yeah.
So if we do that, I just want to make sure I understand, if we decide to default green, then everybody who's in the program is going to get green unless they ask to not be green, is that right?
Correct.
At the moment, this current program that we're in, people are defaulted to not green, and they have to ask to be in green.
That's correct.
Right, which a small number of people have done.
You're ahead of another municipality that had no commercial council and green, but they also just defaulted to green.
So let me just say, in the first round, communities that participated and went to default green are Town of North Salem, Town of Bedford, Town of Newcastle, Town of Osning, Village of Croton, Village of Osning, Village of Tarrytown, Village of Irvington, Hastings-on-Hudson, Pelham, New Rochelle, Village of Larchmont, Village of Mamaroneck, Town of Mamaroneck, and the City of White Plains. All of those entities went for default green. The entities that are in the program that did not go for that are Somers, Lewisboro, Mount Kisco, Pleasantville, Greenburg, and Rybrook.
Rybrook, just by the way, signed to default green.
Uh-huh. So, I mean, speaking for myself, I think it's a fairly compelling argument, especially since that means that in our community, we can deliver a default green option with the savings you just described, and still save residents money over the rate had they stayed with Con Ed.
Correct.
And the 100% green rate as compared to the 100%, to the basic supply, might be an upcharge of a buck or two a month.
Correct.
So. All right, so we'll obviously need to discuss that with all five of us, we're only three of us tonight, but I thank you for this.
Well, thank you for giving me the time.
Appreciate all the work that Westchester Power, Sustainable, and Westchester is doing. And we have the MOU, the authorization of the MOU for resolution tonight, so we'll meet your deadline.
That's what we like to hear.
Yeah, you have questions?
You have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
How did national wind no longer qualify as green power?
As I said, what we are being mandated to do, national wind means we're getting it from Oklahoma or Texas, some wind farm, and again, we would have been fine with that, because in some cases, the argument can be made, the air out there is worse than here.
Is worse than here, right? So this is what you refer to as New York State?
Yes, yes. So now we are being directed to really focus on New York State.
So New York existing wind, are all the turbines out in the middle of the state?
Right, so which is why we're doing with low-impact hydro.
And that's coming from, correct, the hydro?
No, it's going to be New York.
It's got to be New York.
It's got to be New York.
So I mean, and of course-
So we're going to dam the sawmill.
The positive aspect of all of that is that increasing demand means increasing investment by the private sector in-
Correct.
Sure.
-renewable sources. Until there's clear demand-
Well, again, feeding the local economy, which is really, I think, where New York State was trying to go with us. And I think they, you know, it will have an impact, so.
Right. All right, any other questions?
Nope. Good.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Yeah. All right. Any comments from the public of any sort? Since we have no members of the public here to comment on this last week of August?
I do.
Okay. You're not a member of the public.
You're no longer a member.
You are, I guess.
Well, I wanted to comment anyway, that's okay.
Yeah, okay.
I noticed a couple of things, which I'm happy to see. Pink and green cleaners, and I don't know about the other cleaners, but they're selling bags for their, closer, for $10, you get a bag, a reusable bag, they're trying to eliminate plastic bags voluntarily.
For laundry, for laundry.
For laundry.
Right.
Pink and green cleaners, and I heard, although I wasn't there, that Little Mumbai Crepe Street Restaurant-
Yep.
-has eliminated plastic straws voluntarily.
Yes, I heard that, too.
You know, and I feel like it's a mood and it's an attitude that is taking over the village a little bit, or taking over the community, and hopefully, more and more of these things will happen, you know, I'm happy to see it, that things will happen voluntarily, rather than us or some other organization having to press issues. I just wanted to say that I'm, you know, happy they did that, that's all.
Great. All right. Steve, 188.
Whereas by Resolution 2015-147, a local law 2015-7, the Village of Pleasantville established a community choice aggregation program in cooperation with Sustainable Westchester, Inc., a not-for-profit organization now comprised of over 40 municipalities in Westchester County. And whereas the program is set to expire on December 31, 2018, and whereas the village wishes to continue its participation in the program beyond the December 31, 2018 expiration date, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees approves the memorandum of understanding with Sustainable Westchester, Inc., and any and all documents required to continue the community choice aggregation program, authorizes the village administrator to execute said documents, subject to the final approval of the village attorney. And attached is the MOU.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. You can go home for the night. Mission accomplished. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
189, Joe.
Whereas the village seeks to create Chapter 166 Taxation, Article Roman numeral 10 of the Village Code concerning real property assessment of converted condominiums to prevent residential property owners from converting to a condominium form of ownership that would result in a lower assessment, which, if permitted, would unfairly lower the property tax burden for the converted property while increasing the property tax burden to owners of property in a conventional form of ownership. And whereas the Board of Trustees has held and closed the public hearing on August 27, 2018, and whereas the Board of Trustees has deemed it to be a type-two action under SECRE, requiring no further action, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts Local Law 4 of the year 2018 to create Chapter 166 Taxation, Article Roman numeral 10 of the Village Code concerning real property assessment of converted condominiums, and the local laws attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? This was discussed previously in the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 190, Steve.
Whereas the Village Board of Trustees seeks to amend Chapter 148 Signs and Outdoor Display Structures, Section 12, titled "Approving Authority," in order to grant the Architectural Review Board the authority to review and grant variances for signs and outdoor display structures. And whereas the Board of Trustees held and closed the public hearing on August 27, 2018, whereas the Board of Trustees has deemed this to be a type-two action under SECRE, requiring no further action, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the Local Law 5 of the year 2018 to amend Chapter 148 Signs and Outdoor Display Structures, the Local Law 5 of the year 2018 to amend Chapter 148 Signs and Outdoor Display Structures, Section 12, titled Approving Authority Concerning Variance Applications for Signs and Outdoor Display Structures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Again, this was discussed previously in the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Joe, 191.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated August 27, 2018, covering check numbers 90737 to 90826, is hereby approved as listed below, from the General Fund, the Water Fund, Capital Fund, Refuse Fund, and Trust Fund, for a total of 407, 180, I'm sorry, 407, 182,000, no, 407,182 dollars and 77 cents.
I'm glad that happens to you.
Pardon me.
Do that all the time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register?
I have a quick question. Are we pretty much paid in for the music festival? Everything rolled into there by now?
We're getting there, we're waiting on some, one sponsorship check, correct?
Yes.
All the
All the big bills are in.
All the bills are paid?
Yep.
So maybe next, next meeting, shoot us the
Report?
Report.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the check register? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 192, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Holy Innocence Church to hold a parade and block party for the Centennial Celebration of Our Lady of Pompeii Chapel on Sunday, September 23, 2018, in the area of Garrigan Avenue, Madison Avenue, Saratoga Avenue, Meadow Lane, Lenox Avenue, and Columbus Avenue, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, pending proof of insurance.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think the application said 9:00 AM to noon?
The block party, it turned into a two-piece, and we felt they had to do two applications.
Oh, I see.
And what we asked them to do was go and get, sign a block party form from the people impacted by the street closures for such a long period of time.
Happy, happy to assist on such a happy occasion, the Centennial of Our Lady of Pompeii.
Real quick, will they need any kind of, like, traffic calling?
It's all been run through the chief of police.
Chief, very good.
Yep. But the parade is a limited impact, and then it's set to street closure.
It's localized right there.
Yep.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 193, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on August 13, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 194, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Daniel Shay as school crossing guard, job code title 0141, at a rate of $20.62 per hour effective September 6, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 195, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Cass Giorce, 95 Sarals Lane, for a block party on Sarals Lane from House Number 68 to House Number 98 on Saturday, September 15, 2018, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Block parties.
Have fun.
I think Sarals Lane has got a pretty good tradition going on there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 196, Steve.
Whereas bids were received on Wednesday, August 15, 2018, for Foxwood Tennis Courts Rehabilitation Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works, hereby rejects all bids and authorizes the village clerk, the village clerk, to renotice the request for bids for the Foxwood Tennis Courts Rehabilitation Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, do you want to report on this one?
So we went out to bid with a construction date of this year, as soon as possible, essentially. We had one bidder bid on the project, came, you know, within the range of the budget with, which we expected, but talked to the Superintendent of DPW, talked to some other contractors who specialize in this work, and they were saying, everybody is extremely busy right now, didn't have the capacity to take on a project like this. So heard it from a few people that it would probably be in the village's best interest to rebid with a construction date of spring of next year. We'd have it done by Memorial Day if we started construction, probably in April. So we'll get, certainly get more bidders next time around, and probably drive that number down.
Does, does the tennis court rehabilitation project include fixing the wall?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question.
No, 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 there's a stone wall that collapsed. That's a fence. It's a different project.
Yeah, no, that's a different, that's a different issue altogether.
So, and I just throw out there, I forward this to Eric and the folks at Prab, we're going to weigh in on it, but we had expression of interest from some community members about striping a court for pickleball.
I don't know what that is.
Which is a new trend.
Yep. It's a smaller court, lower net, and so it's less
And bigger racket, right?
A paddle, you play with a paddle.
So paddle tennis?
Yeah, yeah.
Bigger than ping pong, smaller than tennis.
However, just for starters, one possibility is to, in addition to tennis stripes on a court, add pickleball stripes, and live with the fact that the net would be a tennis height, so that's something
We can discuss.
To be discussed.
I've talked to the rec department about that. Apparently, in the past, they've converted the basketball court near the pool into pickleball courts.
Okay.
And had made that available to the public. So that's also an option.
Really? We had a net, a lone net across the middle? All right. But anyway, so, subject of discussion, and if folks are listening, our interest in pickleball would be worth, worth knowing.
We have to vote?
We do have to vote. So, back to the rejection of bids. All in favor of the rejection of bids?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That's the last of our regular agenda items. Anybody have any new business?
No. Can I just follow up on the wall comment? Is that a thing we should put into our, onto our radar to talk about? I mean, it's not ideal.
Jeff, Jeff has some ideas that he's brought up before. That's something that we've talked about, probably funding in-house with cash and not necessarily having to go out the bond for.
Stone walls are expensive. It's just, it makes me nuts, because you feel like it's just a stone wall, but these guys, you know, it's hard work and
It's kind of like the wall before.
There's planning, and, you know, it's a lot to it.
Have we at least cleaned up the fallen stones? Haven't been down there in a long time, but it used to be quite a mess.
Yeah, I can talk to Jeff about that, absolutely.
All right. I realize I didn't make a couple of announcements at the outset, and I'll do here at the end of our meeting. The first is actually, we have a, I don't know if a ribbon cutting is right, a check presentation is right, I don't know what the right word is, but Governor, Senator Terrence Murphy is coming tomorrow for a brief ceremony to highlight the fact that he, I think, as well as county legislator Mark Kunzio, were influential in getting monies to repave Marble Avenue, which needed it to begin with, and really needs it now